Did you?
Yeah.
All ready? Is there a motion going closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Everybody? Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors from Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enter into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2 dash 3711, discussion concerning a prospective business or industrial or the expansion of an existing business or industrial where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industrial interest in locating or expanding its facility in the community. Project number 2019 dash 023. Consult with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. One technology manufacturer building. Discuss consideration for interview of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disloyal or resignation of specific officers, appointee, or employees of any public body, one personnel. Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Fitch Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Fay?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Is there a motion coming out of closed session?
So moved.
Second. Where is the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County had conveyed a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act in where is section 2.2 dash 3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the board that such closed meetings were conducted in conformity with Virginia laws. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meetings and requirements by Virginia laws were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies and only such public business matters as was identified in the motion phase that closed meetings were heard, discussed, or considered by the board. Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Fay?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Fitch Kowski?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Now we are invocation and pledge of allegiance by county administrator.
If we could, let's stand for a moment of silence and then I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Board members, our first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. Following public hearing was advertised pursuant to law in the New River Valley section of the Roanoke Times on September 1st and September 8th. This is for the issuance of general obligation bonds in an estimated maximum principal amount of $33,335,000, the proceeds of which will be used to finance capital projects for school purposes, including without limitation renovations and additions at Christiansburg Primary School, Christiansburg Elementary School, and Bellevue Elementary School. Glad to have Courtney Rogers with us this evening to give us some...
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can we probably read?
You wouldn't want company being red.
No, certainly not. Maybe black.
Are we going to go over this further in the work session? Is that the plan? Okay. So at this point, we're going to hold this information for review with you during the work session. This is the public's opportunity if anybody wants to step to the podium and address this issue. You have five minutes.
Seeing none, we'll move to the next.
All right. Next item on our agenda this evening, board members, is public address. This is the citizen's opportunity to address the board on any topic. You have five minutes. If you come forward and state your name and address, and we do have one person signed up, I believe Phil Calacott, did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir. I apologize. I thought I was speaking on behalf of Christiansburg.
Okay. So...
You can still do that.
Yeah, you're welcome to take five minutes now to address the board on that issue if you'd like.
There will not be another opportunity, so this would be the only opportunity that you have to speak on behalf.
Good job, Mr. Shepherd. Good job. Well, I apologize for the mix-up, but maybe I could take this opportunity to address any questions that you may have about the project. My name is Phil Calacott. I'm with Snyder and Associates, and I've been the pre-construction lead on Phase 1 of the Edgar Long Building Restoration. So does anybody have any questions for me about the project itself?
We have this item on our agenda later in your business, and if the board members have any questions at that point in time, we could ask you to come back up.
Yes, sir. I apologize. That's me not being familiar with the procedure.
No worries at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else that would like to address the board on any matter this evening under public address?
Seeing none, we'll close public address.
Mr. Chair, we haven't opened dinner this evening, so that moves us into work session.
Work session. Is there a motion going work session?
So moved.
Second. Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Ms. Fay?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Fitch Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven eyes.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the first item on the agenda is discussion of debt service structure, and Courtney has handed out information related to the debt issue, and Courtney will recognize you to walk us through that.
I guess it is right there. About that.
All right.
Very good. Welcome back.
Hello again. So we're getting closer to the issuance. Tonight, you will be asked to approve resolution that allows us to move forward with the actual issuance. As we've talked about, our recommendation is to move forward with a standalone issuance through the Virginia Public School Authority. We're going to be issuing that debt in a couple of weeks. We had the ratings season town last week for rating tours, had two good days of tours on Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and showed the county office was great. They're always, they, I think they really appreciate being on the ground and seeing, because they get all the data, but they can't really see what's going on. And it's been, I think it was nine years since we had them down last, eight or nine years, and so it's good to have them, have them back in town. And they actually, out of the four that came, one had been here before, so the other three were brand new. It's always good to get the newer folks down. Tonight, what we wanted to do is go through and give you a little bit about the numbers and show you what we're thinking is going to happen. The market is still in great shape. We're not at the lows of lows, but real close to the lowest that interest rates have ever been from about year eight out to year 30. We're always conservative, so the interest rates you can see today are basically plus 2.5 basis points. We have seen the market moving quite volatile here recently, so we wanted to make sure we still had a little bit of cushion in there. But essentially with the assumptions, you're going to see the numbers in just a minute, but we wanted to let you know that we looked at three different scenarios in terms of the way we structure the repayment of the bonds. The first one is we looked at what we call a capitalized interest scenario, and that's where we actually borrow a little bit more to pay interest over the next several years and then start repaying the debt service a little bit later. The second one is just doing interest only, so we don't borrow anymore for interest, but we just delay when we repay a principal. And then the last one is paying principal immediately, level debt service, just like we would if we were doing a home mortgage. Basically, we start paying for it immediately. Our recommendation, working with staff who went through the different scenarios, is to move forward with the level debt service scenario. Essentially, let's go ahead and start paying it back now. The reasons are three. One, we borrow less. We don't have to go out and borrow as much money. Under the capitalized interest scenario, we have to borrow more, so there's more debt that we incur. Second one is there's less debt service. What we mean by that is by either scenario one and two, the capitalized interest or the interest only, we're delaying when we pay principal, which means the principal is later in the loan, which means it's higher interest rates in the loan, and we pay more interest. So there's more debt service. Saves us about $2 million over one scenario and $1,007,000. So there's real money that we're saving. And then last scenario is it gives us more debt service capacity down the road in the future. We're not going to tie up our capacity for projects later on down the road. And so I think that's important for other projects that may come in down the road. So page three here basically has, well, we have our projected debt service right now slightly below $2 million a year of interest. Hopefully, we'll come in below that. Interest rates will hang in there, and we'll be below that number. When you look at the impact, remember there's two ratios we look at, and that is debt as a percentage of assessed value, that's total debt outstanding divided by tax base. And page four shows we're well within our ratios of 3% or 4%. But the one that we, of course, have been close on for all these years, especially after adding Blacksburg High School to the CIP that we were expecting, page five, is annual debt service divided by the budget. And you'll see the light greens, basically where we're projecting paying back the principal and the interest starting in 2021. There's a little bit of interest in 2020, just, just a little bit. You can barely see it there. But then you can see there's, there's enough in 19, remember, the Series 19 bonds in '21 and '22, and then you'll see it opens back up when debt service drops in '23 and '24. So a couple of points we want to make here is, one, we've got the capacity to do other things that you might want to do on the county side. There's about $5 million capacity there in the '21, '22 timeframe. And then, as we've talked about in the joint work session with the schools some months ago, we've got room to do some other projects for the schools, but we know they're still working through the dollar amount, and so depending upon what number they come up with, we might have to do a little bit of structuring. We may have to do capitalized interest or interest only when we get there, but we can get it done. And so we thought with, with interest rates low now, let's go ahead and pay these, go ahead and get this, the debt service paid now, and then we'll worry about the, the next bond issue when they, they come to us. So you might say, well, what's the cash flow like? For page six, this is our estimated cash flow impact, taking the existing schools' debt service, adding these 2019 bonds, we've got the existing budget available for schools. And then the last two columns show additional dollars needed and net dollars. Basically, what that's saying is in 2020, no matter what, we need about $300,000 of additional revenues to pay the debt service. In 2021, that number jumps to $1,005,000, but if you've already raised the $300,000, you really only need a $1,002,000 additional. And then for 2022, it's going to be another $500,000, assuming you've raised enough in, in '21 to cover that $1,005,000. So that's just for these bonds. It's basically three years, and once you're there, everything starts dropping down from there. So that's really what we wanted to present to you tonight. Happy to answer any questions at this point. We feel, feel like everything is in place and ready to go. Interest rates are hanging in there. As I mentioned just a moment ago, somebody may have heard, we actually saw interest rates declining a little bit today, which is good. We saw that after the Fed raised, or lowered rates, excuse me, last week, we actually saw the overall yield curve dropping right after that, which is good news, so hope that will continue on until we're ready to sell those bonds. So, Chair, any questions?
Any questions? Supervisor Bond?
Just a couple of questions. So perhaps County Administrator Meadows could remind us how much the schools division was wanting for their school plans?
Well, the total is $35 million, I believe, for the three projects, and we're going to cash fund about $5 million of that so that results in a borrowing of approximately $30 million to make up the shortfall.
Okay. Could you go to slide five, please? So you said that we had an extra $5 million of capacity probably to get to that 12% line. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
So if the light green line is $30 million, it looks like the difference between 10 and 12% is about $60 million. Is that probably about right? I mean, or 50 to 60 million dollars, right? So by 2023, it looks like we have about $50 to $60 million of debt capacity if we wanted to stay up at that top line. Is that correct?
When we did our analysis back in the summer, what we had to do is we couldn't pay full principal and interest in '23 and '24, so we had to delay principal for some years until it got down a little bit. Now, keep in mind, we were using 5% as our interest rate. We hope that won't be the case. And so if that, if, if the interest rates are lower, then we'll be able to pay more principal early, and everything will be a little bit less attuned to the plan.
But I'm reading that graph correctly. Is that correct?
Right. It's not exact math, but it's in the ballpark.
Right. It's about.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we have run the analysis as we, back when we did it for the earlier joint meeting, that it worked, at around $70 million.
And the conversations that you had with the rating agencies last week, were they relatively pleased with what they saw?
We haven't gotten feedback yet, so what happens is we gave them the presentation, gave them the tour, and then we've asked for the rating to come back next week, so we haven't gotten feedback yet.
Was there any indication of anything negative?
No, ma'am.
Great. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Courtney, thank you again for being here tonight.
Happy to do it.
Board members, the second item on the work session this evening is a discussion of the Valley to Valley Trail Initiative. This was added, this was asked to be added to our agenda for some discussion about an update on that. Supervisor Tuck, Vice Chair Demonts, who's going to lead that?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things that you may remember from our budget season when we had approximately about $300,000 more than we anticipated. Part of that will be voted on tonight. We agreed to set aside $75,000 to cover CI. That leaves a $241,682. And at this point in time, I would like to see us go ahead and earmark the $241,682 for the Valley to Valley Trail. I believe it would set and send, that we're serious about this. When, in speaking with Supervisor Demonts or Vice Chair Demonts, they talked about a million dollars, building the trail, buying the land, and everything along those lines. There's a lot of 80/20 grants out there. Well, this is looking like it would be a mile of trail, and when you utilize one of those 80/20 grants. So I would like to see us set aside this money for the Valley to Valley Trail. Now, I'm not saying that we spend it, but we put it aside, set it aside for different projects as we need it, whether it be when we have a grant writer and we're looking for grants, or when we're looking and trying to find real estate that, that works with what VDOT's plans are, and then acquiring that land and working with landowners, and then getting it paved and connecting us with the Roanoke Valleys.
Can I just add to what Supervisor Tuck has said, that the Valley to Valley Trail Initiative, when we pitched the idea regionally, it was extremely well-supported. A lot of other localities are very much on board and looking at ways to connect a trail system. From Roanoke to, to Montgomery County or Blacksburg was our original idea, and we got people from Pulaski, we had people from Bodatot with county, and so the regional enthusiasm was there to expand a trail network that would cover, I think we were at over 100 miles with everybody that was represented at the Valley to Valley Trail meeting that Steve and I, with a lot of help from staff, hosted. And so this is something that has been very, very well-supported regionally. Our, our neighbors and other localities are making investments in trail initiatives in their communities. And I think, you know, if we're going to, right now, due to our Valley to Valley Trail meeting and, and the motivation that we've put behind it, we're kind of being looked at as somewhat of a regional leader in this initiative, and I think now it might be time to allocate some funds to putting our, putting some money where our mouth is. If we're serious about connecting the Roanoke and New River Valleys, then I think it might be time to really look at how we can set aside money to do it. Additionally, it is extremely difficult to find money to fund trails, and so when you have an opportunity to set aside money for a trail, and especially knowing that there are a lot of grant opportunities out there, it's very difficult to find the money to do it, and we have a unique opportunity now to set aside the money so we can look into pursuing some grant opportunities. So I, when Chris brought this idea to me, I said, yes, yes, I would love this. This would be huge. So I'm definitely very supportive of taking that $241,682 and considering setting it to aside for Valley to Valley.
I'd like to ask Carol or Angie to come forward. I, I do think there's going to be a way to find some funds to set that aside, but we want to talk to you a little bit about the, the number that we're talking about, because it plays into what Courtney just presented.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted to mention is one other option. Courtney just got through talking about debt service, and in this current year, we need to have, if we put ongoing dollars behind the debt service amount that's floating somewhere around $300,000, that, that in fact then would reduce that mountain following year, so that if we use those unallocated dollars, those are reoccurring dollars, so that we can then reduce the amount next year where the peak is the highest, use some of our one-time-only money, help shape the peak, and we're going to phase our way into when we end up in the year where we have debt service capacity in the budget to cover those ongoing costs. For the Valley to Valley Trail, given that you don't have anything specifically on an annual basis that you're funding, you could in fact take an allocation from your one-time-only money for whatever amount, if it's three or five or whatever amount you'd like to set aside, put that in reserve for the Valley to Valley Trail, and then as projects come up, be able to use that to match off the grants if, if those become available.
I see what you're saying as far as, because this is going to be a reoccurring cost. And, and I, I will say that I'm hoping to see that the Valley to Valley Trail will be a reoccurring cost as well, but I get, I, I want to leave this board better than I found it. And so I understand utilizing one-time money, setting aside $200,000 to $300,000 would be a good thing, and also setting aside the $241 for future to set off those payments next year.
Yes.
Would be leaving the board better than I found it, so.
That would certainly be our opinion on the finance side.
So then I think maybe we could pivot the discussion then to a serious discussion about funding using one-time-only funds Valley to Valley in some dollar amount, because that, that changes how I feel about things considerably, knowing that new information. I appreciate that. But I still really view the funding of this trail as very, very important.
If, if we did set aside the $241 for future and reoccurring, would there be a willingness from the board to utilize some of her one-time money to set aside $250,000 for the Valley to Valley Trail in the one time?
I'm glad you brought this up, Supervisor Tuck and Demonts. Over the last couple of weeks, months, we've also been exploring the expansion of broadband and things like that, and I, I'd prefer that if we set aside some money, it's in a bucket for maybe what we call infrastructure. So we have money available for the Valley to Valley Trail, but I think money set aside for broadband expansion may be very useful, and not that either might be used at all this, this year or next, but if there's an opportunity for a grant for either, that we take advantage of it. So I don't want to, you know, limit us because we're deciding, yeah, we want to do the Valley to Valley Trails, because I'm all for that, but I also see on the horizon the broadband question, and we don't know the numbers, and $250,000 is no small chunk of change, and I wouldn't want to shortchange us to have options to choose elsewhere, so.
I understand. Go ahead, Mary.
Well, following on that, when we went to the broadband conference, this issue came up, and I had sort of talked to Craig a little bit about it, because it sounded like the localities that were serious about broadband had already started to put money aside. You know like how we put $500,000 toward roads? They were putting money aside because they considered broadband part of their infrastructure, just like trails are. All of its quality of life. So I was sort of wondering, now that you brought that up, I mean, is there any, I understand the debt service too, is there anything from staff that we need to be considering before we do this? I mean, is broadband going to come up in the budget this year, or?
Broadband will be discussed at your October 15th meeting. That was under my county administrator comments. We have a report from the group that several of you have met with, and they're going to have some recommendations to the board on your October 15th meeting. So there will be some things coming forward on that in the month, in the months ahead.
One of the things I, I think by making, I understand putting it all in a bucket and saying it's there, but by designating it, it can lead to other folks providing funding and saying, okay, they're serious about it. They have set aside these funds. And it, it's got to be a sizable amount, something that you could use for a matching grant. And so that's one of the things, and, and you notice there's not a resolution to vote on it tonight, but I felt like we had to talk about it and that we talked about it sooner rather than later. And I understand where we're at with the, the debt service and trying to address it, because one of the things I've whispered to, to Mr., Supervisor Fitch Kowski is, I don't like that interest-only payments. It bothers me a lot. And, but I would like to see us set aside money. Yes, I know we're going to have to do something with broadband as well, but right now, we, we make this one step and one commitment, and then you guys are going to have some tough decisions maybe next year, as you do every single year, about providing funding for broadband. But I would like to see us set aside this money, because I do believe that we would be setting that tone for the region and being the leader, like you talked about last week, and saying, okay, we're serious about it. We're going to set aside these funds. We're going to work on connecting.
Would it help to hear what's going to be presented in October in regards to broadband?
I, I wouldn't be rushing it. We wouldn't, we could maybe put it on at the second meeting in October, talking about how we could utilize some of the one-time funds. I would be willing to do that.
Because I agree too with your point and with your point, Sarah, that broadband funding is critically important, but to, to Chris's point, I do think that we should separate them and not have an infrastructure pot, just because one could, you know, we could put them in there with all the greatest intentions in the world, and we could end up spending it all on one or the other that way. But I definitely think that we should begin setting aside money for broadband. I am in full support of that.
Supervisor Bond?
Also, we were hoping to get some kind of report out about nonprofits and what we pay them, and that was part of the whole Christiansburg Institute conversation way back when. So I think, I mean, I certainly haven't forgotten about the, the money that's still out there, but I thought we were going to wait so that we at least had that information before we designated the information. I don't know when... I don't know when Mr. Meadows was expecting to have that analysis done for.
That's my fault. I was putting it off because we got so many projects going on right now. I was going to get with Finance Department and have them to pull that up. I had forgotten about it.
Okay. So those are my three big for a quarter million dollars. I think it's worth not rushing. But what I wouldn't want to do is if there was a grant out there that a quick $250,000 would make a huge difference, I wouldn't want that held back. In any, in, in any instance, whether it was the Valley to Valley or in broadband. I just don't know what broadband looks like, and I certainly don't know what the nonprofits look like, so. But I do understand that a quarter million dollars would go a long way, showing our commitment to the Valley to Valley. So I'm, I'm looking for some direction from some of our financial, financial people to understand perhaps some guidance on how to address those three things.
Well, I, I was wanting to agree that I also think that to set aside money specifically for the trail is, it is very important to other jurisdictions to see that we're committed in that way. Being on the Roanoke Valley TPO, they have three and four projects every year on their greenways. They are aggressively pursuing them, not, and I'm not saying that they're pursuing to come out to Montgomery County right now, but they are, they are really working hard on that, and that is an interest of citizens. Like Supervisor Biggs said, it's a, it's an issue of, of just.
Quality of life.
Quality of life and drawing people to the area. So it's, it's really important, and it does send a message. I wouldn't be opposed to having two different accounts set up, one for broadband, because I agree with you that broadband is extremely important. I went to the conference also because I am concerned about that, and we need to be prepared for that. But really, what we're speaking about is something that we don't know yet. We don't know if something's coming down that we could have to have some kind of matching funds or some kind of contributing funds. We don't even know what those numbers are, so I, I, I think we would be better off to have two separate accounts on that.
Is the Roanoke Greenway kind of, this is how I've interpreted it. Is their overarching goal to build the greenway to the Montgomery County line? Not, not that they have any actual plans for it or any construction or mapping of it, but I've kind of, from conversations I've had with folks in Roanoke, their goal is to, their dream is to build it to the Montgomery County line.
I have, it seems like I have seen some future drawings. And again, like you stated, there is no, they haven't started purchasing right-of-ways or anything like that, but, and there's nothing said in stone, but yeah, I think that is their goal, but their number one goal is to connect the greenways that they already have because they're not connected.
Right.
And so they're still working on that and building the infrastructure, which in a city is even more expensive than it is, it is here. But, you know, fortunate for them, they have the TPO money, which is sizable.
I agree with Steve, and it's kind of something I was going to say along those same lines. I was one of the ones that came and took that survey for the broadband, and, and I told the guy that there were locations that didn't have internet service. I have since found out that there are locations in my district and probably in some of y'all's too, they don't even have phone service. So they don't even have cellphone service. So they couldn't get internet at all any, you know, that way. But I was going to say, I was going to use the bucket analogy and say, maybe we need two buckets or three, you know, just so we do designate money for those specific things because I think it is viewed as a good practice from other jurisdictions.
Maybe I misunderstood what your objective was Chair King as far as nonprofits. Were you thinking about that as one bucket and we wouldn't necessarily expand that bucket? We're just looking to see where we're putting that money and maybe if we felt like we needed reallocate it so, so we can take that part off the board, off the conversation at this point in time.
Right.
The one thing that I'm hearing, but maybe I'm not hearing everything, and maybe Supervisor Fidzikowski can share his, his knowledge about, you know, Roanoke's TPO and things like that, sounds to me they're focusing on internal connections, and that's not going to happen overnight, and that would be X amount of years before they're done with that. It makes total sense that they, we would want to do something like that if we were in their shoes. So it may be years before they get to the point that they're able to start coming towards Montgomery County. In the meantime, maybe we're expanding the Huckleberry Trail or our trails because I think we have at least 10 miles of trails to get from the end of the Huckleberry Trail to the Roanoke County line, probably more. I just don't know the distance. Does that all make sense? I'm not sure.
Well, it's kind of like if they were snails and we're snails, and we both start walking towards each other, it's going to take a long time. So we can start on our part of the trail, which wouldn't affect them at all, and they are so close because they're in Salem. So when you look at a map, it looks like they're just this far away from Montgomery County. So it would be easy for them to make up that, that distance. And it doesn't all have to be done at the same time. We could do parts of it. And I'm thinking that's, from what I've heard of other trails, that's pretty much how it's done. You map out an area, but you, you may not be able to start on certain sections, and you have to wait. So while you're waiting, you complete all the other areas and just connect them when you can, so. I, I think that it's, it's going to be a long process.
Steve and I are going to be working together on this for decades.
Yeah.
I, I like what we've been discussing, and I think, you know, potentially setting aside two buckets of money sounds good to me, and I'm grateful that this has been brought up.
And it's also my intention, I mentioned the TPO, and I don't mean to mention it just in the sense of Roanoke or Roanoke Valley. We're members of the TPO, so we will get, we should get some help from them as far as coming that end, the, the eastern end of Montgomery County. So I, as far as I know, the TPO area dips down into Elliston, so that's, that's a good place to start too with somebody else's money.
And just to complete aside, the Regional Commission has been extremely helpful in, in looking at various alternatives and options for the Valley to Valley Trail, and I think would also be willing to assist when looking at funding avenues. So if we've got some money set aside, we might reach out to Kevin Byrd and say, hey, can you help us identify where there might be funds available to match or in some way help us grow this bucket?
Any more discussion?
So shooting for a target date, maybe a second meeting in October?
Yeah, it sounds like we'll have a broadband update the first meeting in October.
And then we can digest that and then try to see where we're at.
Okay.
Is there a motion to come out of workstation?
I move.
Second.
Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Mr. Demots.
Aye.
Ms. Bitts.
Aye.
Chair King.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Board members, next item on the agenda tonight is consent agenda.
I'd like to move the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Mr. Demots.
Aye.
Ms. Bitts.
Aye.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Chair King.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Board members, under old business this evening, we have one item, and this is an ordinance related to the rezoning for JB, excuse me, JJB Properties LLC. You have information in your packet regarding this item, and I believe Emily's here tonight as well as representatives from Balzer if you were to have any questions prior to your vote. No, it's only if there's questions, but.
I don't have any questions. I'll just wait and see if you want to make a motion since it's your district.
I may have approval of the ordinance rezoning JJB Properties LLC.
Second.
Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Ms. Bitts.
Aye.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Demots.
Aye.
Chair King.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Board members, the next item now that that has passed is you have a special use permit for JJB Properties LLC and Jewel M. Albert Jr.
I motion approval of special use permit for JJB Properties LLC and Jewel M. Albert Jr.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Ms. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Ms. Bitts.
Aye.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Mr. Demots.
Aye.
Chair King.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Board members, under new business this evening, we have six items. Our first item is the VPSA General School Bond Issuance. Board desires to issue general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $33,335,000. As we talked about earlier in the public hearing, you have a resolution before you in your packet for that item, should you so desire.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's about time. I'm glad that we're getting here. I'm glad that we have the capacity available to do it. We're one step closer.
Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Mr. Demots.
Aye.
Ms. Bitts.
Aye.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Chair King.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Mr. Chair, I want to take a moment as well and thank staff for all their hard work on, and Courtney's here as well. Thank Gavin Port for their efforts as well on this. If you recall, it wasn't that long ago that we were talking about 2023 being the earliest we could do anything, and that was because we were looking at about 100 million plus in, in debt. Schools went back and revisited the projects and were able to break it down into something that we were able to, to work with. And I just appreciate all the hard work to be able to get this moved forward tonight. So thank you guys as well. Second item of new business is a memorandum of agreement for the ACE program. This, the board has agreed to provide up to a half million dollars for the access to community college education program for the academic calendar year fall 2019 and spring 2020. And you have a resolution for you to adopt that program for the upcoming year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just would point out, it's my understanding that there were 41,000 hours of community service that was directly linked to the ACE program. I sit over there, and I remember that phone call I got from Supervisor Shepherd saying, we can make this happen. And, and now we look back and we see kids who are utilizing it, going to community college, staying in our community to be able to be a well-trained workforce, so.
Yeah, I'd like to add that I look forward to seeing how many numbers of them stick around here and put all that education to good use right here in our community.
There is one thing that I maybe would propose to change. I'm not quite sure. I would like to make sure that I'm on the right page. So in the resolution or whatever we're planning on passing, it says they have to show up to graduation. I know personally, my, when I got my master's graduation, I almost wasn't able to go because I had a medical emergency. I'd like to make sure that if there are medical or family emergencies, that, that is not a requirement. Right now, it looked like it was a requirement to me.
That was added at the request of New River Community College. It's something that they've incorporated into their requirements for the children, the young adults that participate in the program. They've added that to their requirements, which is why it was added to this resolution as I understood it.
And I guess maybe I'm asking for us to modify it just a little bit because deaths and families, you know, medical emergencies could happen. And it, right now, I think it says.
Yeah, I think it says shall, but I think if something came up, I'm sure that community college would, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if they're in a hospital or something, I'm sure they.
And I think they're just trying to say it's a general obligation of students that participate in this program to go through.
Orientation and graduation were both added by New River.
Okay.
But that wasn't important to Angie Covey, but I think that if there was a reasonable emergency request, that that certainly wouldn't.
Great.
prevent them from doing that. But she wanted to make sure that they really were committed to the program.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie.
I'd just like to say I thank all the contributors who contribute funds to, to help this program along because I know it takes a lot more money than what we give them.
Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Ms. Bitts.
Aye.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Mr. Demots.
Aye.
Chair King.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Board members, your third item of new business this evening is a resolution supporting amending the HS Development LLC promissory note by changing the two deferred payment dates. HS Development has agreed to make the two remaining payments of $1 million each on the former high school property, or $2 million in total on October 24th, 2019.
I would make a motion on that.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm in favor of this deferment, but I would state publicly, I would not vote for any further deferments or postponements of payments. I know we're trying to work well with the town of Blacksburg on this issue, and I think we are, and I think this is a benefit to the county by getting this million dollars now instead of having to wait till April, but I would not be voting for any more deferments.
Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski.
Aye.
Mr. Demots.
Aye.
Ms. Bitts.
Aye.
Chair King.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Our fourth item under new business this evening is Christiansburg Institute's roof project. You have before you a resolution to appropriate, actually to transfer $75,000 from special contingencies to the Christiansburg Institute to help cover the cost of the institute's roof repair project. And I know we have some folks from Christiansburg Institute that are here this evening, but that is coming before you in the form of a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Can we ask any questions now?
I don't want to get in the middle of that.
Twenty-five questions to ask.
All right, ask all 25.
You get one. Can he come up here?
Sure.
Chris, if you want to, you and your folks want to come up, board may have a couple of questions they want to ask.
First of all, I'm glad you were able to get the, the other half of that to, to move forward and to get this half if you get, if he gets voted on. My question is, has anything changed? Is this going to be enough for you to stabilize that roof to protect it as you move forward in your fundraising?
Yeah, nothing has changed, no, in terms of the stability of the roof. Is that what you're asking me? No, nothing has changed there that I'm aware of, no.
So, so these funds combined with the, the town's funds will be enough to take care of it?
It'll be the funds from the county, and if a successful vote is moved forward, the funds from the town of Christiansburg, 7,500 from the town of Blacksburg, and the roughly 22,000 that we've raised on a grassroots level.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
I don't have anything. In addition to the matching for both ours and Christiansburg, is that correct? So, okay, thank you.
Yep.
When do you think it might be? What's your timeline?
So according to our contract with Snyder and Associates, that we're moving towards signature, it is a two-month timeframe for the scope of work for. It is a two-month timeframe for the scope of work for the roof project.
Thank you.
Well, good news from, I think, NOAA Weather, they're saying that you're going to have a nice.
Weatherborne winter. Yes, yes, yes.
Any more questions?
I think it's an honor to participate in this, and thank you very much for bringing it to our attention and allowing us to be a part of it.
Thank you.
So this will be enough money to put the roof on, correct?
That's correct. Now, there is one contingency. If the, the roof will be tested for asbestos, if that is positive, the roof cost goes up twenty-one thousand dollars, bringing us to approximately a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars for the full scope of work on the roof project itself. Now, that's only if the shingles on the roof are testing positive for asbestos.
Have you got the money to cover that?
We have, right now, we have approximately seven thousand dollar funding gap if that does come back positive, but we've already been taking steps with our development committee to organize fundraisers in the community, grants that we continue to write on a monthly basis, and additional fundraising opportunities we're pursuing right now.
Perhaps I'm confused. The seventy-five thousand from the county and the seventy-five thousand from the town of Christiansburg meant that you're supposed to raise also an additional hundred and fifty thousand, plus that hundred and fifty thousand, plus?
No, it was seventy-five from us, then.
Yeah, had to be matched.
If you look at the approved budget, the two requirements were that we provide a receipt for the matching of the funding, which the county has put forth and will be voting on this evening, in addition to a cost proposal for the full scope of work for the roof. I've given the letter from the town of Christiansburg that identifies the seventy-five thousand that they've approved, in addition to the cost proposal that Snyder and Associates has given to us, which outlines a firm number for that cost for the roof itself.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion, huh?
Motion, second.
I have a motion. Say, any more discussion? Madam Secretary of Commerce, please.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Ms. Fitch-Caskin.
Aye.
Ms. Mox.
Aye.
Ms. Spitz.
Aye.
Ms. Benn.
Chair King.
Aye.
Seven Eyes.
Our fifth item of new business this evening is an appropriation for social services for companion services. This resolution appropriates twenty thousand dollars in local-only money for companion services requested by social services from the sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars that was returned to the general fund from the original social services budget reconciliation for fiscal year 20. These funds will only be used to serve elderly individuals on a waiting list for services. Companion services are provided to disabled clients between the ages of eighteen and sixty-four, and clients ages sixty-five and older. This is a request, I believe, that came from social services.
Right.
It was discussed at the social services board level as well.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to ask, how come the reconciliation was so high, sixty-seven thousand?
Because we saved money. We pinched pennies.
Is that, is that a normal number from them? Was that usual?
Pretty close, isn't it? Yeah.
Just curious. I'm on it over. That's why the kids only got.
Any more discussion? Madam Secretary of Commerce, please.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Ms. Fitch-Caskin.
Aye.
Ms. Mox.
Aye.
Ms. Spitz.
Aye.
Ms. Benn. Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Chair King.
Aye.
Seven Eyes.
Thank you all.
Last item of new business this evening is to declare by resolution the week of October 6th through 12th as Fire Prevention Week. And this year's Fire Prevention Week campaign is not every hero wears a cape, plan and practice your escape.
So moved.
Chairman King, come up with this. No, I did.
Second.
I have a motion and say, any discussion? Madam Secretary of Commerce, please.
Ms. Fitch-Caskin.
Aye.
Ms. Mox.
Aye.
Ms. Spitz.
Aye.
Ms. Benn.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Chair King.
Aye.
Seven Eyes.
Might to see how we can incorporate that theme into a public information campaign, possibly with the animal shelter. Just saying.
Not every hero wears a cape, huh? That's all the new business we have this evening, sir.
Now we have a, a report from the county admin, uh, county attorney.
Uh, no, of course.
Are you kidding? County administration report.
I have three things I want to mention this evening. First off, there's been some concern expressed. I know the chair receives some calls, I received some calls as well, about a decision that VDOT has made to put a four-way stop at the intersection of Childress Road and Meadow Creek Road. David Clark was not able to be here tonight because he's in Pulaski County, but in talking with David, I think what VDOT's agreed to do is delay that for a couple more weeks to give citizens an opportunity for input. So I wanted to mention that to the board, that if you've received any concerns from citizens on that traffic change, you may want to encourage them to attend an upcoming board meeting and address that with the Board of Supervisors. That was a VDOT decision. I don't think there was any public input on that prior to the decision, and there's certainly been a lot of public that have reached out to several folks about that since then. Secondly, I wanted to give you an update. We were talking buckets of money earlier. The board agreed to set aside a hundred thousand dollars for solar initiatives several months ago. And I'll forge you the full email that Scott Woodrum had sent me on this, but I just wanted to let you know that staff working with the Montgomery County Sustainability Council has been looking at several facilities of interest for perhaps a solar installation. Animal Care and Adoption Center was looked at, Christiansburg Library was looked at, and the Government Center has been looked at. There's been further discussions on these three buildings with two solar providers, Baseline Solar out of Blacksburg and Secure Futures out of Stanton. The next steps in the process is General Services is continuing to research options regarding these solar opportunities. One of the things that's come into play too is we do have, not issues, but we're going to have to address the roof on this building at some point because it's getting a little age on it. So there may be some options to address a couple of things there at the same time. We'll be getting further information back from these two groups and looking forward to moving something forward, hopefully to bring something back to the board in February 2020. And I know Vice Chair DeMox is on that group as well. Did I leave anything out or mess that up too bad?
I think it's important to note two things. This group was formerly Montgomery County Improvement Council, and due to some advice we received from our finance department on tax status and things of that nature, we did decide to change the name to Montgomery County Sustainability Council purely for tax reasons. Also, this group has worked really, really hard on this and has been meeting continuously and, and following up, following up on leads and getting more information. And so, I know it sounds, you know, make a decision and move forward, but it is very difficult because there's a lot of different options for, for how to move forward and, and ways to put solar in a location at different investment points. And, and how do you structure paying for it versus, you know, are you, are you working with a company that maybe is doing all of the capital outlay and working your structure that way? And so, when, when they bring something forward, it's going to be something that has been kind of very well hashed out over many months, but they've been working very hard on it. And so, I definitely appreciate the insights and just the enthusiasm that our staff has given to this project. They really are very excited about moving something forward.
Last thing, I have board members talking about excitement with staff. We recently received a top twenty-five company award from the United Way of the New River Valley. This signifies that our employees were in the top twenty-five of all the companies that participate in the United Way program each year for contributions. Certainly want to give a thanks to all the folks that participate in that program, and thanks to United Way for recognizing our employees for that effort.
Good job.
And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Sheppard.
I have a few things. I was hoping David Clark would be here, having several for VDOT, but first one I'll start with. I just, I need to give Mr. Metis some information to look up, to check into. I had a call, they put a new, talking about the convenience site on Price's Fork Road, they put a new box there, I guess for cardboard. And the concern is, there's no way to open it from the inside, and it's not vented, so they're afraid maybe somebody will close the operator up in there and leave, which is a huge safety concern. And I don't know that that's the only one. I've thought about that before, but I hadn't had any complaints until just this past week.
We'll look into that.
Another one, and they have, this couple has traversed all the avenues that sounded like that they could traverse and didn't get any satisfaction. They're having problems with dogs barking all hours of the day and night. The guy across the street from them owns, has bear dogs, and he works nights, and they think he's not feeding the dog, or the dogs, but he is keeping water, and they do have a pen, and I think that's the only requirement that the, the control officer, animal control officer looks at. I'm not sure that that's what they should be looking at only, but, and another thing, I don't know who, I don't know, is he the one that does like the sound noise ordinance? And, and I think there's a certain decibel that it has to reach, and, I mean, it's just hard to catch, I guess.
Party, do you want to?
Yeah, yeah, we have an ordinance about a, I think it's called habitual barking dog, and so it's not based on noise as much as.
Well, that's what I thought.
continually doing it, and the sheriff deputy would have to respond, and that would be the witness along with the, the order.
If you can get us the details of that offline, we'll pass that along.
Okay. Also, in Narrows Run, there's a, there's a section, and I'll have to get you the addresses, where this guy was complaining about water running out in the road, like mud in the road when it rains. Of course, I'd like to have a little rain to get some mud in the road myself, but, so that's a VDOT issue, and brush, and he was complaining about the brush on his motor home, both in Narrows Run and Custer Branch Road, and a lot of places in the district, and I'm sure all over the county, but that was just another complaint.
We'll pass that on to VDOT.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Tuck.
Couple of things with the Fire and Rescue Commission. One, they have set the date in for the twenty, August 10th, 2020, for the recognition of firefighters for twenty-five years of service or more. So y'all will be doing that next August. Also, as part of my duties on the fire and rescue, we got an email from Neil. There is a countywide burn ban.
I meant to mention.
And I just wanted to go over what does that mean. Open air burning includes but not limited to campfires, burning a brush from gardens and lawns, and any type of burn barrel. And if you have any questions, you can contact Neil Turner, but if you haven't been out, everything is really dry. We have had brush fires. There was one down in, in the Elliston area, and it is very dry right now. And so, please be careful with that. Also, Christiansburg Fire Department wanted to extend their thanks to the community in regards to the loss of Brian Horn. His daughters are doing a fundraiser down at Roanoke College for suicide awareness, and, and keep them in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you. Supervisor State.
Well, I wasn't with you all last meeting because I was doing my due diligence on the Solid Waste Authority. It was a very interesting trip. We went down to the Seaver County composting site, which is in Tennessee. They are advertised as a zero-waste facility. Zero. But, the end of the story, you're not going to like, but, at any rate, it's a composting site, which they basically, they bring all the material in, into a tipping floor. The person separates any large pieces of construction material, and then they, they push it into these digesters. Just like right out of Star Wars. They are tubes that are approximately sixteen feet in diameter and about two hundred and fifty feet long, maybe three hundred feet long, and they slowly rotate. Takes two or three days to get the material through the digester, and they have five of them at a cost of one million dollars apiece. What comes out at the other end is not quite finished. They have to run it through a second time, but they get compost out of it. And you would think, what an ideal way to get rid of our trash. We can use it. And, so I asked the question, I said, so it's easy to get rid of? No. At the end, it's run through a, a screen that's a quarter-inch size, and unfortunately, little pieces of quarter-inch plastics and metals and whatever is left in there is going to show. So, they have given it to some farmers. It's been spread out, but after a rain, it washes the, the dirt out of it, and all you have left is the, the unsightly trash. So, I was hoping it was going to be a solution for the future because it's something we're always going to be dealing with, kind of like death and taxes. You always have trash. And some of their issues, the number one issue I mentioned, they can't find customers to take this compost, so they basically spread it there at their, at their dump. It also has extremely high moisture content, and part of that is caused by, and I never realized this, but they have so many restaurants down there. Their authority is made up of Seaver County, Seaverville, if I'm pronouncing that right.
Sevier.
Sevierville?
Sevierville, Sevierville, Sevier County, yeah.
Sorry, Tennessee. And Gatlinburg, so you know, there's a lot of restaurants in that area, so they do get a lot of food waste, and that's why the composting works as well as it does. But it was, it was very interesting, but it does have a high moisture content, and they probably, and they obviously have a lot of candy manufacturers because they get pallets and pallets of chewing gum and candy and, and everything else, and that goes in the mix too, and gets composted. But after it's all said and done, I didn't see zero percent waste. Basically, forty percent of it, they take away, and under a permit from the, their, whatever their DEQ office is, they're allowed to bury it in the landfill as construction waste. So, I was disappointed in that end, but it, it certainly was interesting, and it was worthwhile looking at as we look to the future as to what we are going to do with our trash. Because it's, it's expensive, and it'll always be with us, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor B.
Ah, just a couple things. The New River Valley Community Services Board is fifty years old this year, and so, they're going to try to organize like a little celebration, probably be held in Radford. But one of the things that would be nice for us to do as a board is to have a resolution commemorating this event, because, you know, I, I think I've mentioned to you before that we're one of the leaders in the state, and we continue to be, and I think that would be really a good thing for us to do.
Is that something for an October meeting?
Yeah, it wouldn't be that hard to, I don't think, to do. And then, in the future, are you all interested in having a presentation about sort of where we are with the Montgomery County Virginia Tech Executive Airport? Is anyone, would you like to have like an updated, sort of a little mini presentation, because they're willing to do that?
It's been a while since I've been here.
Yeah, and they have a really neat video now that goes with it. And then, I was just going to add on a personal note. I spent Thursday in Richmond at the State Executive Council for Children's Services. I, I represent local government on there, and we had a big six-hour meeting to do a strategic plan, and you, you all know how exciting strategic plans are, but actually, this was good. And I think what they were trying to do is bring all the different silos, because I can't even tell you how many there are that are connected with children's services, you know, statewide, local, you know, but try to bring it all together under one umbrella, so you don't actually. don't actually leave, you know, the child and family out in the rain is what basically we were trying to do. So I felt it was a productive meeting and we're going to go back, I guess in December and sort of finish up. And localities were represented very well through surveys and from other members that serve, so I wanted to let you know that. And that's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Bob?
Supervisor Fidzikowski, as well as Chair King, isn't there still that composting company in Reiner that started probably about five, maybe almost 10 years ago? They were actually contracting with
Virginia Tech Dining Services.
As well as other local businesses.
Marty never used to do that.
I would want to make sure that we don't, I think composting is pretty phenomenal if you can do it well, but I'd hate to take away small business opportunities. So we need to be
Well, I don't think it would. I don't think it would. If we were to ever even move in that direction because of, like I said, we're using household trash. So it's a mix of things. Yes, we do single stream recycling, but that doesn't eliminate all the other pieces of trash that go into the mix. So I don't think it would affect them. And if they're doing that, it's probably on a much smaller scale.
I mean, I went out to their farm or whatever you would call it, and it was relatively small scale, but it sounded like they had a really good business model, but that was years and years ago and I would hate to limit their marketability. So that's just something to think about. And then I have a question about the burn ban. The pipeline, you know, burns a lot. They're under the same burn ban that everybody else is, is that correct?
All of that applies to them as well, yes.
And the two towns are included.
Yeah, well, the whole county.
Yeah, they're part of the county.
Yes.
Also, I want to make a shout out to the Global Strike demanding climate change action that happened at Virginia Tech with Blacksburg High as well as other community members on I think all of that is really important and I think our county needs to be primed and ready to step up and do our part when that's, when we can. And then lastly, one of my constituents talked with me recently about their concern about the drones flying in the county and potentially, you know, the growth of that industry over time and the need for, for example, the Sheriff's Office to be able to monitor, yeah, people or somehow arrest. So the one thing that really struck me is a couple of years ago, say five years ago, several homes in my neighborhood were robbed on the same day. And so obviously whoever set that up, they had, you know, watched those homes and understood when they were, the people were at home and so they knew when to go. Well, I only see that drones probably are an added benefit for people who have not-so-great intentions for robbing, let's say. I'm curious how that all works. Does the, you know, clearly the Sheriff's Office would arrest the robbers if they could catch them, but are there things that can be, you know, is there a magic chip that can be turned off in a drone that would, once the person is discovered as a robber somewhere else or something like that? I don't know. But anyway, there are some things that we should be concerned about or get answers to about personal privacy and things like that, other than the FAA having all the, right now they're the ones in charge. But does the FAA really ever talk about personal pri, you know, people's privacy and things like that? I don't know. I think there's more fleshing out of where the first county, the first towns that are really working with the drone manufacturers to make sure that all the next counties and towns throughout the United States are safe, you know? And so perhaps doing our due diligence around this, whatever that might be, makes it easier for this to be implemented.
Did you get a chance to talk to those folks when they interviewed us?
Yeah, yeah, I did.
I think I asked him that question about the privacy and he said something about their cameras aren't able to
Yeah.
Look
They're only for navigation.
I guess
Navigation or something.
And they don't have a continuous record. There is an individual that stationed, and last time I talked with them, and it may have changed, that was in black and white. But, so those are things, but these are where, somebody's going to order something and it's going to be delivered to your home. That's the same as a UPS driver who's delivering something to your home. I'm not, I guess I'm not following how you're saying that, I mean, you have to order a product to have a drone come to your house and deliver it.
I get that. I'm just saying like the next, this is, what we're experiencing today is one small segment of a much larger industry eventually. And I'd hate for us to not think through everything that a possible company that was doing this might not be as careful. You know, I don't know.
Well, I think what we're going to see is, and what they want to do is get feedback from our community. I mean, that's, and already they're hiring individuals, but we're going to see these deliveries starting with, you've seen, they're trying to use local companies as well as FedEx and Walgreens. I think, is it Sweet Magnolias?
Sugar Magnolias.
Sugar Magnolias, thank you.
No, you're Grateful Dead songs.
Yes, all right. I don't know my Grateful Dead songs, but I do know my Hank Williams Jr. song, so, Amy Sandcock. But that being said, as far as, I mean, I think this is an exciting time. In my mind, this is where we're at with the Wright Brothers, but they're looking for feedback from our community. You have to sign up for these deliveries. You have to be within a six-mile radius. And right now, a lot of it can't go towards Blacksburg because of the restrictions of airspace towards the airport. So I guess your district would have to be more towards what, within six miles down through the valley portion. I don't know if the country club is within six miles, it may be. But down that way, it might be as the drone flies instead of the crow. But, so that's what they're hoping. They're hoping to get feedback from the community. They're hoping to see how this works and I'm hoping that we become the world leader for this. And, you know, we watched the, some folks were CBS, I believe, the morning show started saying, why Christiansburg and why not? We've got a great group of folks and we're willing to embrace change instead of just be afraid of it.
I guess I agree with all of that. I just don't want us in any way to be short-sighted about the future of drone technology. So when the next step is, you know, delivery, I don't even know what the next step. In other words, I did send this information to WING to see what kind of feedback they might have on all the data that my constituent had, as well as I forwarded the email to our county administrator and attorney, just so that, you know, we're not short-sighted in this process, whatever that is. I just wanted to bring it up so that people understood where I might be coming from if and when we get to some future state of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Demontz?
A couple of things. Coming on the heels of the discussion on drones, there is an event on Saturday, September 28th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Moose Lodge in Christiansburg, where they'll be holding flight demonstrations and staff will be on hand. They're going to have some food and giveaways and stuff like that. So it might be another opportunity to have a conversation with members of the team and address some of those questions. And then also I had a couple of other things. Craig, I'm very sorry, I left you out when I got copies of this, so you don't get one.
That's fine. I had a chance to look at them before I gave them to you, so I'm good.
Hey, you opened my folder? I wanted to follow up, Craig reported on this just briefly at our last meeting, but the Renew the New team has now released all of their regional numbers for the Renew the New event. And so I've got just kind of a sample marketing flyer where it's telling the totals. And then they also released a breakdown by county. So in Montgomery County, we had 154 volunteers removing 4,000 pounds of trash from four miles of river. That included 57 tires. And to quote Bill Long, they don't know where these tires are still coming from at this point because they've removed so many at this point. There were 25 total miles of river cleaned. 12,700 pounds of trash were removed from the New River this year. This is an annual event, so these are numbers that we get every year, very similar amounts. We have 152 total tires removed from the river. If you're putting your tires in the river, please stop. We would like to not be continuing to be removing tires from the river. Our Parks and Rec Department is heavily involved in making sure that Montgomery County is participating in this event, so definitely extend a huge thank you to them if you see them. But I thought everybody would be interested in the regional statistics. Also, I wanted to have a discussion with everybody about how we are currently billing for and I guess assessing delinquent accounts for dog tags. Right now, we're billing annually for dog tags. These are $5 to $10. This is a subject I brought up with our previous treasurer and he was not open to the idea of considering any changes to how we administer this program. I did have a conversation with Helen St. Clair, our current treasurer, to ask her her thoughts and ideas, and she said that she was fully on board with looking at different ways to increase the efficiency. She was extremely open to the idea of looking at a three-year tag, looking at ways we can go through veterinary offices and clinics to issue those tags at the same time as a rabies vaccination is issued. Currently, the town of Blacksburg issues the tags and the county issues the tags. And so if a citizen takes their dog to the veterinarian to have a rabies vaccine, if they have a three-year vaccine, they then have to follow up with the county. The vet will send proof of the rabies to the county. Then the citizen has to follow up with the county every year for a $5 to $10 bill to continue to renew their dog tags. And it is a highly inefficient system and the way that Ms. St. Clair reported it to me, it takes a good deal of manual record-keeping because the vet records come in in different forms. They come in in a spreadsheet. She said there's a veterinary office that just sends a packet of all the little certificates and they have to hand enter every single one of those. She said the packet sometimes even includes cat and dog hair. So there's a lot of inefficiencies within our current system. She is extremely open to exploring some ideas, maybe this winter, on how we might change that. And I was wondering if you guys would be supportive of possibly looking to Marty and seeing if any kind of board action needs to be taken to transition from a one-year to a three-year or if anybody was okay with or opposed to that.
Yeah, it would just be a simple ordinance change.
What would we need to do on our end to change the ordinance? Would we need to have a new plan in place before we change the ordinance or like cart course?
Well, I know we can go ahead and do the one to three with an ordinance change. And then I'll check and see if there's language about trying to get the vet offices. There's maybe some communities who actually give them a little bit of money to do it.
Ms. St. Clair said she was aware that there are some that the vets collect a very small fee, a dollar or two per dog tag. And then a citizen can get the dog tag at the vet's office at the same time that they get a three-years rabies vaccine. So they're taking care of it all at that place and then the vet just sends it on to the county. The biggest thing is that she was extremely open and actually enthusiastic about making this change. I've had citizens bring it up to me as a real inconvenience for a very small bill. So I would like to see with everybody's agreement what we can do to change how we're handling dog tags.
We can draft an ordinance and then bring it up for, schedule a public hearing. That'll give a little bit of notoriety and then we'll also get Treasurer's Office to make sure from a timing standpoint what works.
Yeah, she said timeline, it would be better kind of later on just because they've just mailed out the personal property taxes and, yeah.
Well, we might need to look at what other things could improve that process. We've been wanting to sell the tags at the animal care
Yeah, animal care and adoption centers.
Yeah, that would be great as well.
And Helen is receptive to that as well. And I know in the past that hasn't been the case. And so we have somebody, I think we ought to take her up on that and
I think it would be a great citizen service to do.
Exactly. That was always the concern is, you know, at the end of the day, we're trying to make it more convenient for our citizens.
Well, another thing that came up in the past was when the community center and library opened down in Steve's District, like why couldn't there be a satellite day when dog tags could have been sold there? And that didn't go anywhere, but I thought it was a really good idea because you have that, you have the Reiner area, I mean, like you bring the service to the citizens.
I'm wide open to those type of suggestions. And just think of the mailing costs if you went from a three-year where you're sending out envelopes and bills.
She sends out a delinquency notice on them.
And you're sending those out, and if you went to a three-year, it just seems to make a lot of sense. And that's when the rabies are, is it three-year and five-year?
Three.
Yeah. And I know the law says you can't go any further than what the, how good rabies, rabies vaccination is.
So I'm hearing from everybody that we're good with trying to move
Yeah, we're
Great, that's awesome. Thank you.
Thanks for looking into that.
And thank you also to our treasurer for being so open to the idea because that was not the case previously, so it was very refreshing. That's all. I'm done.
No report.